Oh, man. That's kind of tough on the home life.
Yeah.
Want you to send a person or something. Well, some people can do that.
So you didn't hear from me then?
I'm only got a couple minutes.
Oh, I knew they had to go down first of the year. Where they at now? Ninety bucks. One or six bucks. We're going to decide thirty eight, forty four. I think a few times. Because they're on train.
To the Litchel.
Right. Yeah. Okay. So they're a transfer station and everybody's their trucking. Sons. Actually, I think their county is DJ down there.
China's supposed to hire them, let her say.
No. The son will take the higher side.
We're supposed to be talking to them.
Sarah, Sarah, and cheaper.
Did you say Forrest would be here?
But if he's supposed to.
Forrest.
I know. I'll leave you to have Jason somewhere. He's helping. There now, there's somebody. Jason not here. Test each other. Sorry, or something like that. There. Well, I don't know. She's still there, so I don't know.
Call this meeting the order of city council ten eighty agenda Monday, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty five sixteen on council chambers. Called order. Patrick.
Here.
Dolly.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Morgan. Connor. Agenda approval. Approval of minutes of twelve nine two thousand twenty four and special meetings of one nine two thousand twenty five. Approval of financial statements. As of twelve thirty one two thousand twenty four. Approval of bills as presented. Approval of liquor license. And what the? What's this one here?
Don't worry. World. Same.
Okay. Now, let me dollar general. Approval of liquor license come and go. Your motion.
Make the motion.
I'll second it.
Patrick, how do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
And number four, we gotta hold off until Jason shows up. All right. Go to number five. We haven't had code enforcement really for eight months now. Jim was gonna take it over, but losing an employee, he doesn't have time to do it, so. Uh. Jason. Has a son, Harry, who Sarah and Ash and I talked to. The other day, and he's got a contract in front of you. And he's been doing this. Quite a few years now, and I did stipulate. That. He's gotta be in contact with me at the final notice, and when we do the cleanup, possibly be here. If it's a cleanup on a Saturday to work at the police. And. If he's in town, I expect him to answer the phone, so I can talk to him about different issues on code enforcement. We had Ed lead him and then. Max and now Jim didn't have time to do it, so. Just think we can hire this Harry.
And you guys have sat down and met with him and you finalized everything?
Yeah, I basically told him, if you not do it the way I want, you're done.
Is this a similar?
Um. Yeah, exactly.
Hey, do what we were paying previously.
I think this is twelve and we've paid a thousand. Thousands.
Now, this says up to sixteen hours worth of. Time of month. I mean, are we trying to make sure we hit that sixteen regularly, or are we just like? Every one month we get one hour, it is what it is?
Yeah. I mean. I could find a lot of stuff, and I think he can. I drove him around down and there's a lot of problems we have right now, and I don't think he'll have a problem for a lot, but I wanted to wait to hire until. First of February, because a lot of people complain, well, there's no one. While there's trailer after trailer full of junk just sitting there, it could be holding off the landfill right now. And a lot of these people. I've. Informed them about our town cleanup and they just disregarded it.
Now, there's a question I had too. Is. So would you? Be in charge of the hours? Or how are, how do we track that?
He's supposed to be in contact with us. Sarah.
The way it was before, when we got the bill, there was usually a breakdown of when they came out and how many hours they spent here. How much money was spent on the notice, postage fees, everything was spelled out.
And he says. We can go right off of what Max did. We're not gonna start all over if a person had a notice for first notice, second notice, whatever. He can hook right onto that. Because last time we totally switched overs. Started from day one and lost out on one cleanup.
Did he express how he was going to work that sixteen hours? Is it just eight hours like biweekly? Or is he gonna do four hours a week, or? Did he say anything like that?
I'm leaving it up to him.
Sure.
But I specifically said he's got, besides Sarah, he's gotta be in contact with me.
Sure.
If I got, because the first person these people are gonna come up to knocking on my door and say, I got a notice. I need to know if they got a notice. So I can explain to them what's going on.
The other question I had too, because taking backs off that, if he were to come. Twice a week. Just. How does the hours begin? Because I don't know where he's coming from.
To and from travel.
Does it include travel?
Yeah.
So because he traveled an hour one way, or we lose half our time just due to.
If that's the case, then we would want him to come less often, I'd say.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that was the question I had.
These inspections usually run on a ten day cycle, so he would be out here, you would assume, three times a month.
Yeah.
And then they will keep him busy.
Um, and I do like the last time, you know, like Max provided us a list of where he's at, what he's working on and.
He's good for the scene.
Good. Yeah.
Clear Elon.
Yeah. Yeah.
He used to have a. And the reason I told Harry, he's gotta be there when we clean up, because. You go to Craig's place and see something. I go to Craig's place. Corey goes, we're gonna see different things. He said, when it's time for the final cleanup. Besides just pictures, we gotta have the code enforcement guy there to saying this and this and this needs cleaned up.
And he's been.
And that's the trouble we had last time, said, no, I won't come out and do it. I said, Ed lead him always did. He'd meet me on a Saturday with the police officer there and Marty dared clean up the property.
He's willing to do that too.
Yeah, he said he's willing to.
Do we know where he's going from?
He said an hour and a half away.
I don't think that's perfect.
Not that far.
Maybe just over an hour.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Right there. Yeah.
He said he didn't have a problem going up, talking to people besides taking pictures.
We need a motion.
If you guys are good with it and everything, I'll make that motion.
Do you like the passion?
I'll second it.
Second. How do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Okay. Sanitary mowing, Jim.
Just with, with the start of the new year. Blessing, we will, we've had two years of the contract. It was a one year contract. We extended it to two for mowing and spraying in the cemetery. So with council's blessing, we will put it up for bid. For both mowing and spraying individually.
Okay.
Yep. We need a motion.
I'll make, oh, go ahead. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Second, okay. How do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Okay, seven. You're up, Forrest. Number seven.
You have time. That's the time.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Forrest Aldrich with Pink Street Camp. So this is a pay estimate for the lighting part of the project. This is for our. Carnet lighting doing the light poles. And so this is their, just their second pay estimate. They're still about fifty thousand dollars. We have not paid them yet. They're mostly done except for the two light poles on All Saints Drive, just south of Second. They're laying there, but they're not installed yet. Assuming they're waiting for some better weather to get that done. Uh, but everything else out in Wumboldt is, is installed. All the light poles are out there. I don't think they're lit yet.
No.
Not lit yet.
I don't know if, I don't know that they're all tied in yet.
It may not be, so probably a little bit of work to do there yet, but that's why we're still holding fifty thousand dollars. So we recommend. Approval of the partial pay estimate to, for the lighting part of the project.
Was this sep- totally separate than Mackinich?
Yes, this is a totally separate contract from Mackinich. Separate agreement, separate contract, separate everything. And we did that because, uh, this is being done by an electrician type work, so it's a different type of work than everything else. So we split it up so that we could get better pricing. We're not paying, we're hitting markup to have Mackinich or somebody else manage it.
When do they? Propose to finish?
Uh, and now from that, I mean.
Yeah, like get the other two poles up and.
Soon as we get some decent weather. So, yeah, Thursday. I'm, I'm guessing it's gonna be March for the, those two up. I'm guessing, I don't know. You know something?
I got a locate called in, so I assume that.
Oh, they got a locate in, okay. You know more information than I do.
We need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Russell, how do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Okay. Eight. Sanitary sewer project.
So this is the real rehabilitation of the sanitary sewers on the south side of town. Uh, this contract is with Biju Sewer. And. So this is fixing the sanitary sewers that are tributary to the Harlem Street Sewer that goes up northeast. Down Harlem. And. There's hundred and fifty six sanitary sewer services that we are opening up and routing. So what we're doing is we're lining the sewers and we're lining, uh, we're routing the service connections where the home. The service from the home connects into the main. We're routing that connection so we don't get any groundwater leaking in at that connection point. And so what they found, uh, is that there's of the hundred and fifty six services, there's nineteen of them that are so gunked up that they can't. Make that seal in there. And so these nineteen, they need to go in there and actually send a little cleaning robot up the main line and have a picky back cleaner that sends a jet of water. Up the service to clean that out. So, uh. Couldn't do that twenty years ago, but, uh, with this technology, they can now clean that all up and then they can get that service routed. We wouldn't have to do it. We could live with some, you know, some inflow and infiltration, a little bit of leak each coming in. But Jim and I discussed it. We've got the budget for it. We think we've, now's the time to get this as tight as we can get it, and our recommendation is to approve this change order. They're actually in town.
They're working, doing the routing right now, and in my opinion, there's no sense in spending eight hundred plus thousand dollars to leave eleven thousand dollars of leakage.
So we'd recommend a approval of this change order.
And that's, that's all that you guys have found so far, or do you think there's more?
They think that's all.
That's it, okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay. I'll make that motion.
My Dolly, how do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Where, where are we at while we have you? Where are we at on?
Back on Wumboldt.
That's where we're at.
Um, so. Got a startup for the lift station this morning. I did get the pumps started up. Think those are fine, but there's a guy for the generator startup was set, so they have to reschedule the startup and the training for the generator. There's a list of things that Jim and Matt both sent me from this morning of items that need to get cleaned up there. Labeling breaker switches, getting some painting done to. Fixing a push button.
Stems broke on the reset on the one pump.
Yeah, reset. So there's a list of things. Um, the fence, um, as of Thursday, the fence was not all installed. Where the gate is at the north end of Barley, but the gate was not in on. Uh, the gate, the fence was not in along the north side. Development, but it is in along the east side, except for at the very south end, and it is.
Restoration is done.
And the lift station fence is done. So there's progress being made, but there.
It's the subcontractors, it's not Mackinich making the progress, sorry.
Yes, yes. So there's progress being made, but they're, they're not done yet.
And no. Estimate on.
No wind in sight.
I mean, I. The fences about Bill and this cleanup stuff, which Matt, uh, actually sent to some kind of terse emails. Uh, that was as kind as I could be. Some very terse emails to Macknich saying, when is this gonna get done? Here's this list again, you know, let's get this thing wrapped up. So there's progress being made, but as far as. Had schedules before and have come and gone, so.
There's still surface restoration that's gonna have to be done too.
Yeah, surface restoration and spraying has to be done.
Are we still, are we still in control of some money?
Oh, yeah. We have not paid anything since October council.
Good.
So.
So we got a little leverage.
We, yes, we do.
Good.
Yeah, we, we're holding back. Like a quarter million dollars, I think.
It'd be nice once the weather breaks if, I mean, yes, they need to finish, but it'd be nice to start getting some basements in and out there for sure.
Yes.
So we can get this, get it going.
Yeah, we. We're way past.
There could be a dozen houses being built right now, or.
Yes, they're good.
Completed.
Yes, they're good.
Perfect.
Forrest, on that, on that generator startup, that's not just gonna be the Arden Electrician, correct?
No, it'll be from the.
Interstate power system.
Yes, yeah.
Because that's gonna have to be load banked and everything else.
Yes, yeah. Just like electric pump came out for the light pumps. Yeah. Um, Man American Gas is done out there. We heard that, although they made a mess out there and there's a lot of cleanup to get done. So. Now I'll have to wait till spring.
I was gonna say, now it's frozen.
Yeah. Very frustrated with all of this, but we're continuing to push.
Thank you, so thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, nine, resolution number twenty five, I want C, resolution setting the date on proposal references. The date will be February tenth.
I think it's Twitter.
Second, how do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Okay, Chief Rehals has been working on the body cameras. He's getting a quote, possibly renting them. Do you have anything to say, Katie, on this?
Um, I mean, my, my own opinion would be these are vital piece of equipment that it's, it is almost unheard of not to have a police department with. Cameras in their office, in their cars, or on their person anymore. And it will become an issue moving forward the more it's found in a V R A department without any sort of camera system. That's, yes, that would be my two cents.
Okay, thanks, Katie. Hopefully they will have information on the prices of everything in February. Okay.
Is that? We have another meeting in two weeks, right? Could we? Could actually.
We're gonna schedule a budget book session.
Monday, January twenty seventh.
Okay.
Okay. Appointments. Tonight, I would like to appoint Trevor Nelson to the board adjustment with the council approval.
We need a motion.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second. How do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Okay, there we go. Twelve. Stewart, you can handle it, you don't, Matt?
I went ahead and noted that, uh. The All Saints Edition, we still have lot thirty three remaining available. Seed. Group has went ahead and paid to have some reseeding and maintenance performed on the ground. To make it more appealing. Uh, but it still goes. A lot to just let people because of the maintenance. On that. And my report is a. A report that I was able to copy and paste from Forrest. For the. How's an addition? Sorry, hold on. And then, uh, marketing report. The Facebook pages received almost ten thousand views. Reach that's a, the reach has grown like hundred and five percent. So I think that's pretty positive. I can go over all the numbers there, but, uh, the main thing behind the, the marketing there is that Stewart's getting recognized. More people are seeing Stewart and. It should. Those, it's hard to quantify, but that should. Help. Bring attention to Stewart, positive attention to Stewart, do this in your Stewart. With Stewart's here, that's not just places to drive by on the interstate or things. So I can see. So I just think it's a positive. Information. Again, hard to quantify, but, uh, those are some pretty high numbers. Something I'd like to maybe see us continue with later on. Bring a little time for that comes up. Any questions?
Thank you.
Jason was supposed to be here to give a presentation about building inspector. I guess since he's not here, we'll have to. February meeting, unless we do it on the budget. We just go over his new proposal. Okay.
I have two things. Our insurance premium, the quality insurance is coming up. Uh, we've been asking, would you like to bid it again, what it has to bid? As part of insurance.
Yeah, we do, we do that every year. Or we don't have to do it every year.
You don't have to if you don't want.
Tweet and bid or redo it, right? Tweet or bid it or redo.
It will be a renewal, yeah.
All right, I'll be satisfied with. Everything so far.
Yeah. They paid out well on.
Yes.
Insurance claims and.
Yes.
When is it up? I'd say keep it, so I guess that's my opinion, but see what these. Do you say?
I'd say we're just renewing it.
Okay.
The last thing is, I just mentioned, we're gonna have a logic book session, January twenty fifth at six P M.
Twenty seven.
Twenty seven. Twenty seven at six P M.
I guess going back to the insurance.
Yes.
I, I would say renew as long as. The rate, there's no increase.
But there won't be.
I, I, but if it's, I mean, if it's, uh, significant.
It's always, they give us indications, it's gonna be between six and nine, and issue one, that's what is.
It's not, yeah, if something's on plan issue or something, and we get that.
Yeah.
Then, uh, then we probably.
Have a good conversation about it. I got one thing. We're ready.
Mayor, Mayor, uh, Jason just is gonna be walking in.
Oh.
We don't pay the loan out though.
No.
On these contracts.
No.
So.
We're not gonna be cool on the, go ahead.
Dick, is what's happening is. Nadine sent out an email that said six thirty, so several people think Nadine starts at six thirty. So that's where the conflict is, just.
Yeah, we send the collection. We apologize about that.
You know, we have been here on time.
Well, go ahead, Corey.
Just a, just for an F Y, F Y I to the council, uh, at our last meeting, uh, Mr. Irving was here, um, about the lot. Yeah. That the city was mowing or whatnot. Um, I did take it upon myself to go over there and meet with Mr. Irving. Uh, to see what his concerns were. He's, you know, he didn't tell us up here that, um, you know, he would like the city to do a better job at mowing. If not, you know, he would be open to purchasing. Um, he did advise me that he really doesn't want to purchase it. He would just like maybe better mowing, like we mow it, like we would do the parks, cemeteries, whatnot, whatever. Um, I did notice the grass was just a little taller over there, but it looked like it was maintained. Um, he was just, um, more concerned with just good, regular mowing, um, weed even and stuff like that. So I, I don't think that, that would be a problem. So I did visit with him, just letting you guys know that I did. If we do have a complaint like that, I think it is in our new diligence, he might be following us or something like this. So I did go over there, have a visit with him, and, um, he was okay if we just continued mowing it. Um, but. Just FYI.
And just so you know, Jim and I checked with Josh and. We did find out the last time we might go inside with, what?
It was late October, the last time I mowed.
That's on the same schedule with anything else, right?
Yeah, with everything else.
And same.
Yeah.
Um. Like requirements.
Yep.
As we would.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, it is, it is a undeveloped street. It's not, so. You know. The city park or so, of course.
Right.
So, and you're gonna have, there's, we removed a lot of trees out. They used to be chucked full of trees, so it's mowed at a taller height than most things are, just due to the. Stumps that are still there. I mean, they're tight to the ground, but they're still, it's mowed at a little taller height, just due to those stumps.
Sure.
Okay, Jason. We went to public forum, didn't we? They said that, an email went out, said the meeting was six thirty, the drill started at six. Oh. So I'll let you talk about this, that central in public forum, we won't be able to vote.
No, we, we're going back to the.
I can.
Number, yeah, number four.
Okay.
So I'm dead, Jim.
Okay.
We didn't adjourn.
Well, sorry for the confusion. I thought I was eight minutes early. So. Um, so. Get my head on straight here. Um, inserting, uh, the city for quite a long time, I don't know how many years now. Um, we have had an eighty twenty split for the building permit between B E K and the city of Stewart. Um, we've been switching quite a few of our clients to an hourly rate. Uh, the logic behind it, um, the building department handles as it kind of just is the nature of the bees, a lot of different things. A lot of consultations have to happen, a lot of meetings have to happen. Fences, deck shed, the deck sheds, you know, all of the little things. Um, those honestly are the ones that are the most contentious, uh, when it comes to dealing with things. Um, and, uh, we had put an offer out there for the city to, to have an option of new construction only. Uh, we have a few communities that wanted to do only new construction. Um, we actually had in our contract many years ago to handle only commercial inspections. And then, uh, the previous inspector, Mr. Woodson, used to handle all residential. So anyway, uh, not to belabor this any longer, this is just basically covering our bases as a company, uh, taking everything to hourly, obviously. Meetings like this and talking with, you know, the city or whatever, that's, that's not gonna be like, we're not gonna keep a tally sheet and charge you for every little thing, but.
and charge you for every little thing, but, um, we will be switching to hourly with the contract calls for it.
Cause I think Jim had mentioned to me that like on a deck, your inspector has to check the footings and come back later and check the posts that go up and then the decking, which.
That's only after we get the plans that are transferred from a barn act into actual building plans and everything else. So, yeah, there's, there's a definitely a process involved, depending on who's business, you know, so, yeah.
Okay, the council okay with switching garlic? You got a motion?
Yeah, Jim, so how are you gonna relay that to your townspeople when they come in and wanna have an idea of what a building permit for a dexter costs? Or a ram or whatever? How are you gonna relay that as in actual costs?
Those fees are still gonna be derived the same way. So when you're gonna do, let's just say a new house, if you're gonna build a new house, we're still gonna provide, uh, the same fees and schedule of stuff that we have, a planner viewer sheet that is transparent for the multipliers, but the square footage, and that plugs into the city fee schedule. And so those fees are still gonna be the same. We're just gonna keep track of the hours involved for that to come out for doing the inspections. If that answers your, I just barged in on.
It's just relaying it for you.
Yeah.
Cause I talked to Ash, I didn't wanna have you do commercial and then have to find somebody else do the garages and sheds.
Yep.
Yeah. We can all say the same.
And that, and those costs will be passed on to the homeowner or business per.
Person say, so who's paying the hourly fee, the city or the homeowner?
The city, you're saying the city.
The city pays the hourly and then you guys.
The homeowner or the person, that stays the same. That'll look the same.
Yep. So the city takes the risk on potentially paying more. If we tell somebody a price.
We will be paying for it. The city.
I wouldn't say that. I don't, I don't know the. I can give you fee schedules for other like communities to have if you guys wanna look at your fees. I can send that over to you.
Yeah, we won't know until we go through it.
Yep.
For a duration.
And then go back and do a cost analysis. Yep.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. I'm probably looking at things. Want to table? Well, I don't know, I, I don't know how, I mean, we don't, we'd have to essentially enter a contract and see what we would pay over the next, is it a year? Or how?
We're, we're self-renewing every year.
So we'd have to go for one year and see, um, after one year, then we would have to do a cost analysis on what we paid this year versus years previously as a city to see what, if it was cheaper, more expensive, whatever it might be. The townspeople would never know the difference.
Yeah.
I mean, on their, you know, on their end, unless I'm wrong.
You're exactly right. You're exactly right now, yeah.
But I mean, to review what we're currently charging right now and get, uh, an updated fee schedule from another city, you know, be able to kind of guesstimate where we might fall if not.
We, we could do that. We would have to compare to a different city.
Yeah, I can send that over to you in the morning. That's, that's no problem if you wanna do that. Um, I can tell you for our, for our side of it and we're looking at what we deal with for, just dealing with it, for all the things I just labeled fences, the sheds, the decks, the sidewalks, the ride. All of those things like that, we don't come out on top.
So you would be able to send over, uh, like a year before and then an updated, like for a different community?
Yep.
So this is something we could, we could table until.
You tend to on the budget to put a vote on it, the twenty-seventh is steadily waiting.
Are you talking about me sending over for what another community has done?
Yeah.
I wouldn't be able, well, I, what I agreed with what you said. You know what you paid for the years past. Do a year for what we're talking about for hourly and then you could do a comparison. I can provide that information to you pretty easy because we keep track of all of our numbers on it.
Right, a year from now, but I think what Craig was saying is would there be another community that's similar to ours?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess it doesn't need to be.
Nothing that.
It would be nice to go similar size.
Yeah.
But that you've gone with this contractor.
Not for a year, we haven't.
That's what I'm wondering. You haven't probably done this for a whole year.
Yeah.
Everyone's in the same boat.
You can do it for six months, I would think, though. You should be able to get through the building season, see where you're at for the first January through June and see where you're at. And do a cost analysis. That way it's pretty easy, I would think, assuming things are all equal.
I guess my opinion, me myself, I, if we could table it till two weeks, I'd like to, a little bit more time on it myself. Myself. When, when are we due to?
I don't know. We're, we're not changing. I mean, we're still, we're still the same agreement. This is just switching it out. He's, we can kick it for a couple of weeks.
Okay, I hope you guys are okay with that.
Okay.
Okay, we'll table it until.
And we did approve, they did approve Harry's contract.
Okay. Did you have any questions about that? They're officially giving that to Harry.
How many towns does he cover right now?
He has, uh, well, with you guys, uh, and then Dallas Center and then Granger and then all of them.
I think, I think our questions were, um, sixteen hours a month. How would that look as far as a, a weekly thing? And how are we making sure that?
He'd be coming out, he'd be coming up here a couple of times a, a month and doing, yeah, and doing that and the paperwork involved, the mailings and all the things.
Cause I was just, if he's coming from an hour away, are we paying the drive time? And then if that's the case, we're better off him coming less often and staying longer.
Yeah, yeah.
But we just did it wrong.
Over a couple of weeks and then you guys had a meeting about him talking with you guys about communications.
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions for me? All right, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any else have anything, public forum? Eighty-four seven.